Thank you. Good evening, everybody. If we could stand for the plus.
All participants are muted.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to your republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. All right. Good evening, everybody. First item, we made a little bubble for some reason. Under item 10 should be executive session, superintendent contract. And so we need to add that to the agendas. Do I have a motion to add that? Thank you. David, do I have a second? Jerry? So item number 10 is going to be executive session, superintendent contract. Any discussion on that? All in favor? Thank you. Motion passes. All right, we will move up, back up to the beginning of our agenda, to item number three, which is the report of the chairman, and we are going to recognize a couple of students this evening. So I'm going to let Joe take it away first.
Sure. This is, this is awesome. We've got like people at a Board of Education meeting. This is fantastic. I'm really excited. This is always a fun time of the year. We get to recognize students. I want to start just by asking Steve to come up and talk about our, the recognition of our College Board 2021 National Recognition Program Scholars. I think we have a couple of certificates for you to join you.
Yeah.
I don't think I need a mic, Jerry, but thank you. So our first two students we're recognizing tonight, as, as Joe said, are the 2021 National Recognition Program Scholars, and this is for their academic excellence and just outstanding performance on their PSATs. And for those two, we have Emily Dial and Emmanuel Hernandez. Emily, I see here. Emmanuel, I don't. I would have given Emmanuel his. Tomorrow. That's right here, good? Nope, you got it in too. My bad. Well, you get it here. I'm going to block you. Really important one. There you go. You're welcome. Congratulations.
I'm going to ask, I'm going to ask. I'm going to ask Mike Crowley, Principal of Jockey Hollow, to come up also. And Steve is going to join him again as we recognize our Western Connecticut Superintendent Association Award winners. So every year, the Western Connecticut Superintendent's Association honors two students from the middle school and two students from the high school. We have this really beautiful ceremony at the Amber Room, and Dan Barry, unfortunately, with everything going on this year, we couldn't do that. But it's a, it's a really, it's a really great honor. You know, the staff from each school is asked to choose the students that they think best exemplifies our, our core values as a school. Where recipients are asked to be chosen by their school faculties based on commitment to their academics, leadership to the school community, and community service to the school and the greater Monroe community. So I think it speaks volumes of these four individuals. At the Amber Room, there's usually a program that goes out with a short blurb on each of the candidates from each of the towns. So I've asked both Mike and Steve to read the little blurbs that they have about their students.
And this, this comes from the teachers. I put out towards the teachers, tell me something about this student. Why was this student chosen? So this is really heartfelt. This really means a lot. This comes from teachers who have known them and have seen what they've accomplished over the last three years. The first recipient I want to talk about is Shivani Anam. So could you come up, Shivani? So this is like a compilation. This is like the greatest hits of what all your teachers have said about it. So Shivani is an incredibly bright and compelling student. Her dedication to her coursework is impressive, but she truly stands out to her classmates and the Jockey Hollow STEM Academy staff when she unleashes her ability to speak fiercely and passionately. Her written work is mature and focused, and she takes pride in every task she takes on. Shivani has proven time and again what young people are capable of, when enthusiasm and intelligence mix. Congratulations. And the second recipient is Ava Moretti. And Ava, this is your life. You ready? Ava Moretti is capable of turning any group of students into a warm and supportive community. Her infectious enthusiasm in the classroom has made her an invaluable member of Jockey Hollow and a friend to all. She is dedicated to improving herself academically, striving to master skills in a creative and meaningful manner. Her athletic prowess is equally impressive, and Ava has added so much talent to the softball and basketball teams. A leader in and out of the classroom, Ava has shown maturity, kindness, and intelligence in all aspects of her school career. Congratulations, Ava.
So the first award winner for Massey is Erica Fair. As Mr. Crowley said, this is the description as given by her teachers. Erica's enthusiasm and passion for life and learning is contagious and refreshing. She puts her heart and soul into her interests and is a pleasure to teach. She has found a calling in multimedia design and production and is motivated and naturally inquisitive. She has confidence and follows through with projects that interest her. Mostly, these projects benefit the community and individuals in a positive way. Erica has a passion to share her talents and skills for the greater good and does them with a smile on her face. Erica also took on a side project of designing the new principal's business card. Working with a professional in the printing business to make the proof was up to proper specifications. Thank you, Erica, and congratulations. Second Massey Award winner is Justin Ginta. Justin is a hard worker who loves learning. He is very positive, he is a very positive person, kind, compassionate, spiritual, and respectful to everyone he meets. Justin is a natural leader whose charismatic personality draws people to follow. There is no doubt that Justin will be successful in the future, and if he accomplishes his personal goal of becoming an FBI agent or the Secretary of Homeland Security, this country will be a much safer place for all who call it home. Justin was also a commended National Merit Scholar along with some of his classmates, but could not attend the Board of Ed of Meeting back in the fall. Congratulations, Justin, on both of them. Thank you.
Thank you all.
All right. Thank you for behalf of the Board of Ed. Congratulations to all our winners, and you guys can go. No need for you to stay here for the rest of the meeting. Yes. We appreciate the big crowd. I don't think you've seen this in like in a year and a half, but feel free to take off. All right, we will move on then to our consent agenda. Do I have a motion to approve? Thank you, Christine. Second, Shannon. Any discussion? All right, hearing none. All in favor? Great, thank you. Motion passes. We will move on to our reports of our committees and liaisons, and up first is our Massey Board reps.
Mr. Check.
Good evening, Board of Education. I hope everyone is having a marvelous Monday. On May 1st and May 2nd, the Massey Business Clubs had a joint fundraiser at Lakeside Nutrition and raised over $400 for the Janet Halplin Business Scholarship. And so far, spring sports have been going well, and today, the Massey Girls Tennis Team played against New Fairfield and won 6-1. And a couple of days ago, the Massey Boys Volleyball Team defeated Pomperog 3-0. The Boys Lacrosse Team also had a win against Notre Dame Fairfield, 15-0, and Girls Lacrosse also won against Notre Dame Fairfield, 15-3. And Baseball and Softball won their respective games against Brookfield, and so did Girls and Boys Golf against New Milford.
Thank you.
There will be a Strings Concert on Thursday, May 13, and a Band and Chorus Concert on May 20. There will be a 9th grade social event on Friday, May 14, and a 10th grade social event on May 15. Massey will be holding the Junior Prom on May 21 and the Senior Prom and Post Prom on May 22. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. I know the Pension Committee has a report. Who's giving that? Thank you, Nick.
Good evening. Pension Committee met last Thursday. The bottom line is things are going great. The Board of Education Plan is 91% funded, which our broker told us was one of the best in the area. The Q1 2021 one-year return on the plan was 39%, so don't get used to that. But that was kind of an eye-popping number, but we are right in line with the actuarial estimate for six and three quarters, which is very average for the state. And every pension committee, we get this really cool report at the top that shows all the different things that our broker is projecting. And of course, the next two fiscal years, we're projecting positive GDP growth as we start to come out of the pandemic. So arrows are pointing up for now, but always be cautious.
Great, thank you. Does anybody else have other committee reports? Thank you.
Policy met tonight, and we reviewed about four policies, most notably of which was the Title IX updates. So we'll be bringing them, we'll bring that before the board next meeting for first review.
Great. Thank you. Anybody else have reports? All right, hearing none. We will move on to public participation. I will start here. If anybody wishes to speak, come on down.
Poor Jen.
Marie Blake, 359 Wheeler Road. Thanks for having me here again tonight. My focus tonight is next year's instructional model. I specifically want to speak about dual teaching, which refers to teaching the students in our classrooms while simultaneously teaching other students remotely. This synchronous form of educating was a way to survive the pandemic, and as educators, parents, and students, we gave it everything we had in order to lessen the negative long-term effects of school closures. Together, we survived, but one could ask, did we thrive? From what I have heard from the board over the course of this year, we all see the benefits of having all students in our classrooms and getting back to what education was before the pandemic. You have been charged with making decisions that affect all students and staff of Monroe. Deciding on our instructional model for next year is one of great significance, which may have long-lasting effects. If you open the door for some students to learn remotely, for whatever the reason, we may never be able to close that door again. Dual teaching and learning remotely has taken a toll on all of us, teachers, parents, and students. Just because it helped us survive does not mean it helped us or will help us thrive. It's not in the best interest for the students and for the district to allow remote learning, synchronous dual teaching, if we can do without it next year. Thank you.
Thanks. Anybody else here before I move to the phone? All right, is there anybody on the phone?
No.
Nope. All right, then we will move on to the report of the superintendent.
Thanks. I just wanted to start off by talking a little bit about the, what's known as the S R 2 funds, the Elementary and Secondary School Emergency Relief Funds 2. This is kind of the third rounds of funds we had in the beginning of the year, the CARES Act and the Coronavirus Relief Funds, and then the S R 2 funds. And then we actually, Ron, Jack, Sheila, and I sat in on a, on a state webinar this morning where they just began discussing the ARP S R, which I think just for clarity's sake is what I would call the S R 3 funding. Very preliminary information on that. But I, I had mentioned the S R 2 funds before. I just wanted to keep the board apprised of some of the initiatives that, you know, that we have going forward, that, you know, I met with the administrative team. We looked at, you know, what's the best ways that we could reach the most students and meet them and reach the most impacted students from, from the pandemic. So, you know, these are some, some programming, you know, some programs that we have designed for the, either the next year or the next two years, because we actually have two years to, to use this money by. So a couple of things. Number, number one, you know, every year, we have a, we have the Special Education Department identify students for a summer program. We are going to add an extra week of that this year. Normally, it starts the week before, I'm sorry, it starts the week after July 4th or the week of July 4th, depending on when July 4th, but around that time. This year, we're going to do a week in June. So we're going to have an additional week of that in June. Met with Mike and his team to look at the middle school regular education program for students who, you know, may not be identified as special education, but who, you know, were impacted by the, by the pandemic and who struggled and try to identify students for that. At the high school, we're looking at a bolstered learning and credit recovery program at Massey. You know, we've done summer school in the past. This is, this program will have a little bit more direct instruction involved in it to really address some of the, you know, the mislearning that, you know, that didn't take place this year. We are, you know, at the elementary level, it's not part of the S R money, but you folks had put the readings, the reading programs back into the, back into the budget. Those programs are going to run to also, you know, address those students at the elementary levels. That's, again, that's not necessarily a special education program, but it will definitely address students who were impacted by the pandemic this year. Another thing we're doing, you've heard us talk in the past about SRBI Tier 1 interventions. You know, our elementary schools, it's, it's kind of second nature to the work that they do. Just, you know, it's, it's very ingrained. If you ask any middle school or high school around the state, it's a little bit more difficult in those areas. So we are going to do some SRBI 1 training at the middle school and the, and the high school. You know, we want to fund programs and provide professional development that's going to reach as many students as possible, especially those who struggled during the pandemic. SRBI Tier 1 inter, training focuses on, SRBI is scientifically research-based interventions. It's broken into three tiers. Tier 1 is that which is used in the general education classroom. So it's going to reach, it's going to impact the most students. Tier 2 is usually some kind of small group instruction. Tier 3 is usually, you know, one-on-one or one-on-two instruction. You know, we have that down pretty well at both the middle school and high school levels, but we're going to look at doing some Tier 1 training for our staff to give them some high-quality instructional strategies that all students in the classrooms can use to access grade-level curriculum. And that's, that's the important thing here, is that they are able to access grade-level curriculum next year. We're really focusing a lot on learning acceleration and not as much on learning remediation to get kids ready to access grade-level curriculum next year. And there's, there's a lot of work to be done. Couple other things. I know in the past, we've talked a lot about the benefits of Teachers College and the professional development that we've had there. We're going to use some of this S R money to bring some of that Teachers College professional development back at our primary grades. Sheila, K 1 and 2?
K 1.
K 1 and 2. And, and we're going to look to fill some gaps in staffing. You know, we're looking at filling some positions that are kind of partially filled right now. The English Language Learner teacher who, you know, services a whole bunch of kids across the district that, that we couldn't get room for in this budget. We're looking to use this to supplement things like that. The school psychologist at the middle school. Bringing the coordinator back to, especially, we know an area that is going to be really pivotal coming out of the pandemic where, you know, they're seeing, you know, concerns around the country is in mathematics. And then we're also actually looking at, you know, offering other math supports or interventionists at the elementary level as well to help there. So I just wanted to keep folks apprised of, you know, what we plan to do, you know, with those funds as, as they come in.
Does anybody have questions for Joe at that point? Alan?
Has there been an increase in the number of English Language Learners?
There has. I don't have the exact numbers. I can get them for you, Alan, but yeah, there's definitely, there's definitely been an increase.
So you're looking like, what do we have right?
Right now, we have a, we have 1.75 ELL teacher for the entire district. Services five schools. At budget time, I think I was throwing out the number of like 50 kids.
I think it's 50, Joe.
Yeah.
How would you leave on a column?
It's almost impossible, which is why we want to add to that position. Become full-time at least, yeah. Yeah. Nick?
Two questions. Do you happen to know, and this might be a Ron question, but the CARES plus the CRF plus the S R 2 funds, not the S R 3, which is not, we don't have, but how much has been allocated? I know we talked before, it's not a check that's written to the district, it's applications for reimbursement, but what is the allocation to Monroe?
The alle, geez, I don't, I should remember the CARES, and Sheila, you may have it.
Wasn't the CARES like 115,000 or something like that?
CARES was 115. The CRF was around a little under 800,000, I believe. For some reason, 797 sticks in my head. And S R 2 is 512.
Okay.
Anticipated S R 3 is 1.1.
1.1 million?
Mm-hmm.
Now.
But that's not final until we get final. People will go, oh, they got another 1.1. That's, that's potential.
I understand. Now, out of this 1.427, how much of that, let's call it 1.4, how much of that with what you discussed tonight and what we've done previously, have we talked about using? Like what is, what is remaining out of that 1.4 that we can still use after, if we implement what you've talked about today?
I think the 115 is all done.
Yeah.
S R 1 and, and CARES, that's all, yeah, they're done.
That's all done. So what I talked about tonight is what we have available in S R 2. But we've, we've, we used the other money all year.
Okay. And the second question I had was, you know, if we bring some of these gaps in staffing back and we put them back into, well, they wouldn't go back into the budget, right? Because you're using other money for them, but eventually, they would have to transition into the budget.
Yep.
So if we're going to be using these things for this upcoming fiscal year, our next budget cycle, we would, to continue the services, they would be in the budget?
Ultimately, you know, depends on how we, on how we do this. And I think we have to look really strategically at how we begin to, can we start to phase some of these things into the budget? So it's not, you know, what they're calling like, you know, a two-year cliff, and then in two years, you have, you have nothing, you have nothing there. Could we fund them at 100% next year? Obviously, we have to. We already have a budget for next year, but, and then maybe 50% the next year, and then maybe 25% the following, you know, the following year, and gradually wean them in. We were talking about that today. I know Sheila had sat in on some, on some webinars that gave some suggestions about how, how best to implement these, so you're not all of a sudden in one year laying off a bunch of staff that you can no longer, you know, pay for. So is there a strategy to, to kind of get them in over time?
Okay. I have more budget questions, but I'll leave that for budget. So thank you.
Okay. Anybody have anything else of Joe? Can continue on.
Jen, she has, we have 50 students that require.
English Language Learner Services, yeah.
I would assume that they're multiple language, multiple languages within there. It's not one language.
Oh, no, yeah, absolutely, yeah.
Does that require more than, obviously, I'm assuming that the, because you are, because the person handles that, they don't, do they just speak one language?
It's, Alan could probably talk about it really well. I know, I know Dev can talk about it really well, because they do it down at, down at Valley Regional Adult Education. It, it is usually a person who may speak, you know, one or two other languages, but a lot of times, you have students that speak a number of different languages. It's really, it's amazing work to see, you know, I've, I've been down at, I mean, it's, it's on a much grander scale at Valley Regional, but you're in a class with someone from Iran, Korea, Brazil, Poland, you know, and obviously, that teacher doesn't teach, you know, doesn't speak, you know, all those languages.
I guess that's where it works with the.
You know, I have to bring the ELL teacher in to talk about it, because it's, it's really amazing work.
Yeah, you get kids from, obviously, all over. The ESL certification doesn't like specify what language you should know. It's just how to instruct students who, you know, need that service.
I think that would be a great thing to bring in and have a discussion on.
Mm-hmm.
Board PD?
Yeah, that's a good one.
Yeah, that's a great one. Thanks, Jeff. All right, we'll continue, continue on.
I'm going to ask Jen to actually come up and do the special education update. Unfortunately, sadly, Darlene had a death in the family and couldn't be here tonight. I know we were also supposed to have Board PD tonight with Alan and Jen and Darlene, and we'll table that until the next, you know, the next meeting.
Hi, everyone. Okay, so I'm going to start with the financial update tonight. As Darlene stated last month, we are continuing to close purchase orders and at the same time, updating student programming through the PPT process. So if you look at our financial, if you look at our financial update, our outside agencies line, our spending is continuing to increase in that area, and that is due to student program changes. If you look at both our public and private tuition lines, they are showing a surplus to date, and that's a result of COVID, bringing students back to district and other placement changes. If you look down to the independent evaluation line, you can see that that's gone up, and that is directly due to an increase in social emotional referrals across district. Our transportation lines continue to be our biggest savings this year. These savings directly correlate to COVID, students opting into remote learning and other medical concerns. And lastly, overall, we look good. We're in a good place right now. We do have a month to go. We do have a lot more PPTs to get through. We're three quarters of the way through the PPT season. So we'll be doing PPTs through the first week of June, and there could be other programming changes that are going to happen until then, but right now, we're looking okay. Any questions about that?
I just have, hi, good evening. So I know we talk about this often, but the encumbered column, that is the estimate of what we know today getting us through the end of the year.
Correct.
So in these lines alone, as of right now, there's a $723,000 surplus.
At the moment.
At the moment.
At the moment.
So even if something catastrophic was to happen, I mean, it would be reasonable to suggest that in these lines alone, there could be between $500,000 and $600,000 at the end of the year.
Yeah, it's possible.
I think you're being generous. I, I thought half maybe, but.
Yeah. Like we said, we do have some time left, but.
Yeah.
My crap with any chicks.
Yeah, exactly. So then just to switch over to enrollment, on the month of April, we had two students move into district with IEPs. We had three students who were withdrawn, dismissed, or moved, and we had 12 students who were found eligible for. We had three students who were withdrawn, dismissed, or moved, and we had twelve students who were found eligible for special education services. So with those numbers, doing the calculation, we are at four hundred and eighty special education students in district at this moment.
Any questions? Shannon?
Does COVID have anything, is, are the new cases related to COVID at all?
Partly, yes. Yeah, you have access to, access to instruction and things like that. Kids are struggling, struggling. They're also struggling socially emotionally, and we're seeing that. You can see that in our increase in our independent eval line. We have kids that are, you know, need some, some extra help right now. Social emotionally, yep.
So the independent eval line, that's mostly psychiatric evaluation?
Quite a few of them, yes.
Anybody else?
Thanks, Jen.
Thank you.
I guess I can call Marie back up to talk about the next thing because we're right on, we're on the same page here. I really appreciated her comments today, and I'm glad, I'm glad she made them. You know, as you may have recently, as may have seen recently, the State Department of Education has removed the mandate on districts to provide remote instruction for students next school year. Consistent, consistent with that guidance, we will not offer voluntary access to remote instruction at the unilateral request of students or families next year. So we've known, we've known for a long time that the best, the best place for our kids is in the classroom with their teachers and their friends. As, you know, we know academically, it's best for the kids ninety-nine percent of the time. We also know, as Jen was just talking, socially and emotionally, they benefit from, you know, from being in the classroom. So, you know, we do not want to be in the position next year of offering, you know, voluntary remote instruction and kids, you know, popping in and out. You know, with the authorization of the vaccine opening to children twelve and above, expected to open up this week and possibly younger children as the next school year approaches, you know, I'm hopeful that we're going to be in a much different place than we were a year ago. The, the one sticking point right now, I think, that districts are struggling with, with this remote instructional learning, is whether or not the, the state D P H, and probably more importantly, the C D C, is going to begin to ease the restrictions on quarantining because that's still, that's still an issue. What are we going to do with kids if the guidance dictates, if the guidance dictates that we're still quarantining students? I'm hoping that's not the case, but, you know, we've learned, you know, in Monroe, in our region, in the state, in the country, that schools were not the super spreaders that everyone believed them to be. We did a good job with our mitigation strategies. We really have to, I'm really hopeful that the state is going to look at quarantining, you know, kids out. You know, they've talked a lot about investing in COVID testing of students next year. I think that could be a much more viable option than, you know, than this idea of sending kids home for, you know, ten days at a clip or fourteen, you know. We're down to, you know, a ten-day quarantine now, but, you know, that's very difficult. So, you know, while we will not be offering, you know, remote instruction like we did this year with teachers, as, as Marie described, responsible for students in front of them and, and online simultaneously, we are going to continue to build upon some of the platforms that we've used this year and some of the things that have been helpful. You know, different from remote instruction, we'll continue to look at best practices and virtual learning opportunities, and perhaps expand on some of those things that we already do, like at the high school where we offer virtual high school at Massic for students who may want to get into a class that doesn't fit into their schedule, may want to take an additional A P course that doesn't, that we don't offer, or they might just be intrigued in a class that we don't offer and they take it. So there is a difference between, you know, the remote instruction that Marie described with teachers teaching simultaneously, which, you know, I, I think Marie did a great job explaining it. It got us through this year, but it's, it's definitely not a long-term solution.
Question?
Joe?
So Joe, I agree with the both of you, but I'm going to throw it at you again. If they quarant- you can't say you're going to take it away if the C D C says you have to quarantine. So I'm going to play the devil's advocate here.
I know.
Ellington, for whatever wisdom they did, voted to not offer it no matter what. I don't know how you can do that when you medically don't know if you can do that. I agree with both of you, by, by the way. The kids need to go back. I'm just trying to think of the other end of this.
I, I'm just hoping we're going to be in a much different place in three months because you're, you're absolutely right, Joe, because Jack and I have talked about this, you know, if, if, if the quarantining is not going to change, you know, if we do this and we're giving kids a de facto suspension, for lack of my words, I mean, if a kid gets suspended now, we give them, you know, we give them asynchronous work to do while, while they're out, and that's, you know, that's not a very viable option. Are there some other, you know, creative solutions out there maybe, but we don't want to be in the position where we have teachers, you know, especially the unilateral, parents just, you know, hey, you know, we're going to be out, you know.
I, I agree. I'm just, I'm just trying to keep back in my, my brain what happens if.
Yeah.
There's always that if factor.
Absolutely.
And that's, and I, I once again, agree with you too, a thousand percent. I want them back too. I just, we need to think it through.
Yeah. I, I, I am hoping. I know they've invested, you know, there's supposedly significant money. My comment at the, on the D P H meetings on Tuesday mornings with, with the state superintendents is, it's got to be, you know, the testing. They've invested a lot of money into testing supposedly for next year. I said, it, it just, it needs to be a turnkey solution, though. It's got to be some kind of third-party service. I can't ask, I can't ask any of our existing staff, our nurses, to be, you know, on top of everything else, you know, performing surveillance testing on, on students. So, that's a good point, Joe.
Joe, barring, barring what you just said about the C D C recommendations, you want to bring back everybody a hundred percent in the classroom, if that's what you're saying to them?
One hundred percent.
Okay.
No more remote learning unless there's a situation that arises.
And I would agree with that too. Are you looking for like a consensus from us or just, this is?
Some boards voted and some boards the superintendent just announced it, so. I said to Joe the other, last week, just announced it.
Yeah. Superintendent's been making the call.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah, I think.
But you have our support.
Yeah. I think.
Or mine. I'll speak for myself. You have, definitely my.
Thanks. Quick reminder, just, our next meeting will also be the, the annual retiree recognition celebration. We are doing, I think you've all received invitations, we're doing the retiree celebration outside here from five to seven underneath the big tent, so, and then we'll do the, then we'll, we'll recognize the retirees following that.
They hear at the board meeting and.
Yes.
As we've done in the past, except for last year.
Yep. And then the last thing, if I screw this up, Steve or Mike jump in, but I just wanted to just kind of give a little bit of an update on graduation plans for both Jacque Hollow and Massic. We've, we've designated two days for each of the, each of the schools to conduct their, their graduations. Jacque Hollow, Monday and Tuesday, June seventh and June eighth, Massic, June ninth and June tenth. The, the idea is to do one celebration outdoors on the Massic field on that first day. What we're going to do is if the, if the weather's bad that day, we are going to move it to the next day, and it would be outdoors the next day. If the weather's going to be bad on that second day, we're going to, we're going to have two indoor ceremonies where we'll break the, we'll break the student body up in half, either by team at the middle school and probably alphabetically at the high school, and we'll do two indoor ceremonies on that second day, one at five o'clock in the gym, one at seven o'clock in the gym. Our, our, our hope right now is to have four tickets per family for, for the outdoor graduation. Families are going to get two red, at the high school, I don't know if we decided on colors at the, do we do the same colors at the high school and the middle school? Families are going to get four tickets. Two of them are going to be red, two of them are going to be white, doesn't make sense. Well, I guess it could if the, if the background's not white. But they're going to have two red and two white. If it's indoors, your red tickets will get you into the, into the gymnasium for it, so two people can go indoors. The other two tickets can be used in the auditorium where the, if they, if someone wants to be on site for it and take pictures with their, you know, their grandson or granddaughter or whatever afterward, they can do that. We'll live stream it. It's going to be live streamed to homes and it's going to be live streamed into the, into the auditorium. So on the first day of the graduations, whether it's the Jacque Hollow or the Massic, we're going to make a call by three o'clock, whether it's on or off for that night. On day two, if we have to make a call, we'll probably make it by one o'clock. We have to call it earlier because we have to do two, two ceremonies. We'll have to have a little bit more lead time. So, and then the other exciting thing that we're doing this year is Steve has organized a, a graduation parade with the elementary and middle school principals where the kids are going to do a march through the STEM area, and then they're going to get onto, they're, they're going to get on buses. If you went to Stepney Elementary School when you were a younger kid, you're going to walk through the Stepney Elementary. You know, they're going to just quickly go through Stepney Elementary School, Fawn Hollow, Monroe L. For the students that didn't go to school in Monroe, we'll probably split them up into each of the different ones, but it, it should be a pretty exciting time. I know the elementary schools are excited. They're making, you know, they're going to make signs and they're going to write letters to the kids and whatnot, so.
I've seen videos where they did that. It's awesome.
That is so cool.
Should be a lot of fun.
That is awesome.
And it was a great thing that Steve came up with at our P T C meeting, and, you know, everybody's very excited at Massic P T C members too about this.
Oh my gosh, that's really cool.
Did I, did I get everything, Mike and Steve? Did I miss anything?
We're going to go to Jacque Hollow first, and then there they're going to divide up into three elements.
Gotcha.
And also we are doing alphabetical for the two STEM homes.
If you guys go, it'll be alphabetical also?
Yeah.
Great.
We need to.
Yeah.
All right.
Any questions for Joe before we move on to all its business?
Enrollment?
Yeah, well, yeah, but anybody have questions for superintendent report before we move on to that?
Oh, I'm sorry, Joe.
That's okay. All right, we will move on to enrollment and everybody has.
You have a copy of the, well, actually, that was last Monday's. I think there was another student at Stepney kindergarten, so if you look, we are, we are following this incredibly closely. I think I will probably be sending out something to kindergarten and probably first grade students at both Fawn Hollow and Stepney, offering them the option if they can provide their own transportation unless they're close enough in a catchment area to, to, to switch to Monroe Elementary. You see, we have, you know, a little bit more room in those, in those school, in those levels at that school, so. That's where we are right now. We're watching it very closely. I get a call from Lee at least once every three days.
I kind of missed what you said, though. You were going to ask parents if they, if Stepney parents, if they would provide, are we, how did, what did you say?
If, if you, if Stepney or Fawn Hollow parents want to, you know, there's sometimes there's scenarios where, hey, I drive right by Monroe Elementary.
Yeah.
Can I drop my kid off? And we're going to offer that. Can't really provide transportation to anyone who wants to do it, depending, but depending on, if they lived on, you know, your streets, like, I don't know if it's still weird where it's kind of divided.
Whitney Farms is Monroe.
Now it's on Monroe, but still, there's other ones in that area.
But if you go to Doris, Doris is Stepney, Monroe bus goes to Doris.
Yeah.
And Whitney Farms is the same way.
Same way, yeah.
Yeah.
Whitney Farms is Stepney, I mean Monroe, except for two streets that are Fawn Hollow.
And Monroe L has a different time that might be helpful for some parents.
Yeah, it's an earlier start time.
Joe, what would, if these numbers hold firm, twenty-three kids in first grade, like, is there some type of plan you're working on to kind of make that work? Because, I mean, I don't know, like maybe a reading consultant does co-teaching during reading lessons or, or something, but that's an awful lot of kids.
We've had that before, though. The Fawn Ho- if you look at Stepney, Stepney third grade next year, those twenty-four have been that way since, what, kindergarten? So, I mean, it's not like we haven't done it before. We, it's not ideal, but those kids have been like that since kindergarten.
If you're looking at increasing numbers in special ed, which is happening everywhere, COVID slide.
Yep.
A lot of these kids run remote periodically, and then you're going to put them in the first grade where they're expected to, I mean, by first grade, you're reading, expected to be reading.
Yeah.
And.
It's also been a continual conversation with, with the board of finance as well, talk to them about, you know, if our numbers, you know, I'm nervous about, I mean, it's still, it's May. You know, I know that, I know when, when houses are up, they're being sold immediately. And, you know, it's been, it's been a conversation. If we have to go back to the drawing board, then we, then we do.
Do you have like a team of people that are kind of brainstorming on this?
Yeah, the elementary principals, elementary principals, Sheila and I, Jack.
And we're also not offering step update at any of the elementary schools, just in case there needs to be
Yeah.
changes and additions and, and stuff like that.
Yeah, the last thing I want to do is, yeah.
Meet your teacher.
Find out who your teacher is. I want to have it be changed.
Yeah, no, that's a good point.
Wait, hold on a minute. No, I was just, I, my, my budget questions that I was asking before was kind of leading to this, you know. Last year, we gave back a million dollars to the town, and the town put half of that in COVID, in a COVID account, and half of that in a special ed reserve account, which is prudent, which has been discussed for many, many years, which I understand. My question about special ed was, okay, if we want to be conservative, you know, let's talk about three hundred and fifty thousand dollars surplus in the lines in the spreadsheet we saw tonight. There, I, I don't know about the rest of the budget. I know this is a very small portion of the budget, but, you know, we have a lot of money coming in from, not coming in, we have the ability to apply for reimbursement for funds through cares, which is exhausted, C R F, which is exhausted. Now there's S R two money that we've been allocated with the potential for more. You know, I just, with the budget being approved, that's great, but if we give another six-figure or seven-figure dollar amount back to the town this year, I think, in my personal opinion, I would be a huge advocate for asking for some of that money back in next year's budget to add teachers to this spreadsheet. I mean, my personal opinion is this spreadsheet tonight is a floor. It's, it's not a ceiling. If the spring and the summer, if, if the real estate market continues, which I, I don't know if it will or not, but, I mean, there's, there's a possibility of these things continuing to increase, and if they come in pockets, I mean, if, if they don't come in any type of uniform distribution, I think, I want to say it was last year, it might be, it might have been the year before, but we had something like fourteen juniors move in one particular year, and we were all like, what, what is that all about? If you get, you know, six or seven kids at that Stepney third grade, your twenty-four now goes to twenty-six third graders. And I completely understand the budget process. I, I, I understand all of that, but I, I think we have to think about fighting for some of that money that we send back to, you know, add more teachers. And then the next question is, or the next layer on top of this, I think, is if we have the physical space. I mean, I think there's also, I don't know the, the blueprint of all of it, but I think there's a question about like the physical desks and spacing for, put COVID aside for a second, just in, in general in the classrooms, so.
Joe?
All right, I want to jump on that a little bit. If we really want to reward our heroes, and of course, everyone's a hero, if we do have three hundred and fifty thousand left, then we should give back furlough days.
Well, and that's the thing, you know, Ron is.
I mean, if you want, guys want to be, we're going to, and didn't mean to cut you off, Donna, but if we're going to go into future negotiations with these people who we're supposed to be looking at, and we've got that kind of money left, I understand hiring new teachers, but I like to reward our teachers. So I'll look at that from another point of view.
And Ron is working really hard with closing P O's to figure out where we are because we do have an obligation that if we do have money, that we do need to take care of our teachers with our, with the furlough days, and that's why Ron is working around the clock trying to figure out what our final number is so that we can go back and know how much we do have and how much we can offer back to our staff for those.
Is that this year's plan?
That's this year's plan.
Right.
What, out of this year's money, because that's our first obligation. But what that is, we don't know right now. We do know that we have savings. We don't know how much that is, if it's one day or it's all three, you know.
Point taken, Jerry.
But, yeah.
Yeah.
And we worked incredibly hard all year to try to use those, you know, coronavirus relief, coronavirus relief. And we worked incredibly hard all year to try to use those, you know, Corona relief, coronavirus relief funds, CARES act money to.
Use money from other parks or.
Yeah.
Oh, I, listen, upfront, Joe, you, your, your staff has done a stellar job. This is not, and, and, and thank, thank you for, and Nick, your, your words are important too. I mean, everybody's trying to work so hard here. I'm just trying to, and all of us are just trying to say thank you the way we.
Right.
I don't wanna use word promise. I'm trying to be so careful with my words. I, I just wanna honor if we can.
And so the, the five hundred thousand dollars that's on the town side for COVID, that non-lapsing account, is that, is that hitting our budget? Or is there a plan for that?
I think that was set up as a disaster relief fund. And I, I don't think that was Board of Ed specific, the five hundred. I think it could've been, could be used on the town side also. You're talking about the second five hundred put aside? Yeah. It, it was just for anything on either side that could come up unknown. The, the other five hundred was put aside in the special.
Special ed.
For special ed.
See, and that, see, and that's so frustrating too, because that was money that the Board of Education gave back. It was a weird, weird is an understatement. It, it was a, it was a weird year, for lack of a better word. And because of non-use of the buildings, electricity, natural gas, rundown, the whole thing, right? We ended up last year with a surplus. And now we have to turn that money back. And it's been put in this fund by a different body for a different purpose. That's not, that could be educational in nature, but isn't. And now we're sitting here looking at these, these class sizes, potential. And, you know, I understand that, that the cohort, the Stepney cohort of third graders, twenty-four is, you know, they've been that way for a very long time. But personally, I mean, I don't think that makes it right.
Oh, I'm not saying it's right. All I was suggesting is that there, that it's not like we're, this is the first time we've experienced that. So if you had that, we do have plans in place, that's what I was trying to get to, that we know how to address it.
How's it being addressed?
Joe could tell you how that's been addressed.
I'm sorry?
Stepney, in all the years that, since kindergarten where they've had the high numbers.
Yeah, I believe we've added, I think there's been paras in, in those classes to help out in those, those higher number classes.
I'm not saying it's ideal. All I'm saying is that we've had it happen before, so it's not like we're reinventing the wheel and not knowing what to do. That was it.
Yeah, I, I, I understand. I just, I, I have to be very honest with you. I was, when I got the packet on Friday, this is always the first thing I click on because I know it changes so often.
It was the first thing I clicked on too. It's, it's worrisome, you know, we're gonna, you know.
And it's just, it's a different experience. I mean, if you look at, you know, first grade at Monroe L, you know, an average class size of seventeen. And then, you know, it's, you know, forty percent more at, at Fawn Hollow, thirty-five percent more at Stepney. I mean, that's it, 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 it's not only a different experience for the teacher, but also as Alan was talking about, you know, with COVID and the COVID slide and, and increase in special ed. It's, it's a different experience for the student as well. And so, just, you know, very concerning as we talked about.
And we may need to come to a point in the summer where we're gonna need to reshuffle money and decide that hiring a teacher is more important than something else in next year's budget.
Well, it'll be very interesting by, when we get to July and August to see how much the Board of Education actually gives back to the town and, and what will happen with that money.
Again, we, unfortunately, we were given a budget. We have to live within that budget unless somebody does something else. But that is out of our control. We can say, hey, we have all these rising numbers. Is there any way you can adjust stuff? But again, we can't control that. We can only spend what we have. David?
Nick, I, I think, I think too, we have to remember that any money that we give back to the town would be, and correct me if I'm wrong, would be after we honor the MOUs to the unions, right? So we would fulfill those obligations first and then, and then any, any, any give back, right? So, and unfortunately, you're right, we, it's, it's out of our hands. We can't control where that goes. We can certainly ask, but. And then the other thing is, Joe, could you, could you get me an estimate? If we did have to hire one teacher for five years, let's just say, right, would be a good certain point? What would that cost us with current, current contract?
I think right now we.
With salary benefits?
Salary and benefits, I think we estimated around seventy-three thousand?
A year?
A year. For, that would be next year. Obviously, they'd get an increase the following year or so.
Okay, okay. Thank you.
That's if you hired someone right out of college.
That would be if we were getting, we would be hiring brand new.
A step one.
And I, and I think you're, the assumption there was no, no health insurance, right?
No, I think we.
Now, that would include benefits.
That would include a single coverage.
Was that single coverage?
Single coverage. I think we were, like, I, I did, I can find on one of my spreadsheets. I know we, cause as we were looking to backfill the coordinator for, you don't have that number?
I'm trying to.
Yeah, as we were looking to backfill the, you know, if we hire a coordinator back with the S R money like I was talking about before, well, really, we're not, we're not gonna be paying for a coordinator. We're already paying that person. We would pay for a new teacher to, to go into that classroom and we're looking to get someone in at a, you know, someone who was, you know, right out of school, hopefully. And I, I forget what the number was.
We did, for the first year, it would be seventy-three, nine, twenty-two. The second year would be seventy-seven, one, sixteen.
Yeah, and that was salary and benefits.
Yep, zero, master, zero, and then the insurance for single.
Single insurance. I think that was without an increase in, I don't know if we, we may have factored in a little increase to the insurance there too.
We did, insurance over the two years as well.
And, and Joe, how many teachers are we looking at hiring? If we wanted to thin those numbers out for better classroom averages, a couple or one?
I mean, I think you'd be looking at, at least one at each of the, at, at Fawn Hollow and Stepney.
But it's also hard to say, cause you could end up with a huge spike in another grade level that sends another one over.
Yeah.
Again, it's gonna be extremely important to look at this so closely over the, over the summer because we may be needing to make decisions at the beginning of August to, to need other teachers.
I mean, if you look at it, it could be two at each school, or it could be one at each school, you know, I know.
Have you given any thought to redistricting the elementary schools?
I, I have, you know, I, I think that's, we definitely would, it would be out of my area of expertise, I'll be.
You'd have to hire.
We'd have to, we'd have to hire someone to commit.
So in other words, that couldn't be done before next year?
I, I don't think you could, you could definitely not do it before next year.
That's a couple in your project. Look at certain areas, like, I'll put Doris Drive.
Yeah.
The Monroe L bus goes down Woodlawn to Doris Drive. The Stepney bus comes up Doris to
Yeah.
the corner of Woodlawn. That's an easy street that you could look at and see, even if you just redistrict that street. I'm not saying that, but you might be able to start small
Yep.
in certain areas where you have a crossover of buses. And even if, say, this year, it may not affect you, but with everybody moving in, that might help you down the road to shift from Stepney to Monroe L.
Right.
And I think you might, I think it would be beneficial to look some areas that definitely you have crossover. Even Whitney Farms, what is it, Highfield and, what's the other street?
Yeah, you have to look and see.
Hillside. I mean, that's the only two streets and you have the Monroe L bus there.
Right. You have to look to make sure who's on there.
Right, and I'm, that's what I'm saying, like, I'm not saying right now, like, you know, maybe you have a lot of fifth graders on that street. Okay, they go to middle school, now you might not have anybody. So anybody new coming in.
Yeah.
It might be, I'm not saying it's, you know, something that's, but it might be something down the road that could help you even next year.
Yeah.
And small changes before you have like kids that are in third grade and now you're like, I'm not pulling my kid out.
Yeah.
That's a good point. I mean, there, that's a really good point. I, doesn't make, doesn't seem to make any sense that Doris Drive would be.
It never made sense that Woodlawn was half the street was Stepney and half the street was Monroe L.
Monroe L is right down the street from Doris.
And both buses come by.
Right.
So you're crossing, I mean, that's just.
I mean, could we do that internally, Joe? Look at where the bus routes overlap?
Yeah, I think you could make some, like I said, some, I mean, you might have somebody on Doris who just has a kindergartner. You could pull that, they could come to Monroe L. But like I said, the bus goes to that corner.
Yeah.
Joe, is that something that, that, that we work in conjunction with this bus company? Like, do they have a say in?
No, there's a company, there's companies that actually do that.
Redistricting?
Yeah.
But what we're saying is like.
Oh, yeah, yeah, yeah.
If the bus is already there anyways, it shouldn't.
Well, what I'm, I mean, I think a, a lot of parents are just stuck using the bus period, you know?
That's true.
I think, especially at the elementary school level, that you may be able to, even if we can't come to some sort of redistricting compromise.
But then we still, even when they do, we still have to hold a seat for him on the bus.
Right, but the question is, do parents come back, do kids come back on the bus next year? That you don't know. Because there could be parents who pulled their kid off the bus because of COVID who next year are gonna send them back on the bus. You just don't know that.
But isn't the busing issue less important than the size of the classroom?
How much is a brand new school, school bus?
About sixty-six thousand a year, right?
Yep.
But we, we have to provide transportation no matter what.
Right.
Whether one kid rides it or zero, so, but it, it's to Christine's point, I think we should look at it for all new move-ins. Because then people move into Monroe, they can say, okay, I know where I'm going.
Right.
Great idea.
Right, and like I said, you know, you're getting so many new families here that it's really gonna, it could have a really big impact down the, like, in a couple of years from now. You might have kids who are in preschool, so now, next year, these numbers could be even worse.
Yeah.
But at least like you, you see, like Monroe L's always had low numbers. So if you can shift some of Stepney and some of Fawn Hollow to that school and eliminate having to hire a brand new teacher, it's a win-win for everybody. It helps the budget, it helps the students.
Oh, absolutely, absolutely.
Without having to do a big company.
Yeah.
Right.
Exactly.
Just a couple of little tweaks or something. Yeah, that's what I mean. Start off small. Will it eventually? Who knows? Maybe, maybe it could, you could find enough small tweaks to help it buy you some time.
I make, no, I like your idea. It makes more sense to tweak it than to hire some company.
Hire some big company that would come up with what we say anyway. We all live in this town. We probably know enough.
Are you gonna, are you gonna ask for volunteers first?
I was gonna ask for volunteers first, yeah. Let me see where, where I was.
Yeah, if not, then you have to start working on that and see what you get.
Cause like when they asked for volunteers when Christopher was in kindergarten or going into kindergarten, you got nobody.
You arrest at me?
Yeah.
Did you get switched?
Yeah.
From Stepney to Monroe?
We got switched to Monroe L. After Christopher did his step update, that's why it's a good idea, because then I had to explain to him, you aren't going to Stepney with your friends, you're going to Monroe L. At least he already went to Stepney, so I had no idea about anything Monroe L. I didn't even know who was really going there. And he had to walk into a classroom without really knowing anyone, thinking he was going to Stepney with his friends.
Monroe L is right down the street from you.
Exactly. It made no sense.
So we're gonna hire some clown to come in, mess up the redistricting. He's gonna charge us god knows how much money when maybe we could just tweak it and make it more like common sense.
I bet when I was little, I bet your street went to Monroe L. I went to Monroe L. No, half of Woodlawn has always, so the half up to Gabe Hour has been Stepney Monroe L. The other half down to Doris has been Stepney. Until, whatever, years ago. Well, if the bus is full, Jerry will drive up to Monroe L. Huh? If the bus is full, Jerry will just drive up to Monroe L.
No problem, I'm right there.
We would like putting Alan on this project.
I, I can throw him in the truck and I can drive him. I can walk through the woods.
I know, you could walk right through the woods. There you go.
Don't, don't you and Al just walk right through the woods for your ice cream? I mean, it's like this.
Not anymore. You're in people's backyards.
But Terry, you might see Monroe L from your house in the winter when the leaves are down.
I throw rocks at Joe's truck every time.
Now you know where all the things are coming from.
Um, Joe, the, on this spreadsheet, the, the kindergarten enrollments in pink, are those enrollments we have or are those estimates?
No, those are, uh, those are what we have now. You know, I think they're in pink because when we first start doing this, we just roll over last year's numbers to this year's. Those are enrollments that we have right now.
You have a hundred and ten kindergartners coming to Fawn Hollow in the fall.
Yeah.
Actually, a hundred and eleven, though.
These are week old.
Hour by hour, hour by hour. And, um, when you were talking about the S R two funding and you listed the different programming that you, that you went through.
Yeah.
It would, I mean, do you feel that it would be worth it to take some of those out and hire a teacher?
I think we might wanna consider that with S R three, perhaps.
With S R three?
Possibly, yeah.
We just have to keep in the spirit of what's allowed and what's not allowed under that, right?
Yeah.
Which you can use the money for, cause there's certain criteria. It's not, we just need to make sure we're careful on.
Yeah, I, I, I think I'll go back to what I said before about, and I, I completely understand and, and agree that once the, you know, once the fiscal year is closed out and we send the money back to the town, as you said, David, it's out of our hands. But I think that, you know, this is a very, very unusual circumstance in a very, very unusual year. And I think that, you know, you all know that, they're probably listening, but you all know I like to keep up the pressure on the Board of Finance anyway. So I think it would be another opportunity for us to, you know, if we send back any type of six-figure sum after we honor our contractual obligations, whatever they may be, that, you know, we, I think this, you know, this spreadsheet has to be, um, has to be talked about and presented. It would be very interesting to see this spreadsheet, you know, every, I'm not saying to do this, but like every Monday morning. I mean, you know, from when we got it, now it's a hundred and eleven. And you see the, you see the tick up as, as the time goes by, so.
I think the biggest concern is gonna be over the summer. I think we're gonna see some, some big changes on this. And that's really the concern. It's not, you know, as this is concerning, it's gonna even be more concerning.
And, and Joe, you know, talking about class sizes is, is one thing, but is there any concern about the, the physical space?
I'm not too concerned right now. There's definitely classrooms that are still available right now. I mean, Jack will tell you. He was the principal of Fawn Hollow with, how many students, Jack?
Seven, twenty.
Yeah. And back then it was K, it was K four only.
Correct.
So I, I, I do believe we, you know, we're okay for space. There's some, there's rooms that I know that are available at both Stepney and, and Fawn Hollow that don't have students in there right now that, that could. And then there's other rooms that we've repurposed and we'd probably have to kind of take back and, you know, while it's nice that, you know, maybe a guidance counselor, for example, had a classroom, I probably don't need a full classroom for, you know, meeting with, you know, s- small groups of students.
Yeah, I, I think this is, I'm sorry, David.
No, go ahead.
I think this is, I, I hate that, I, I read somewhere the other day, someone said, oh, you know, all this increasing enrollment is a problem. I don't like that word. It makes it sound, I mean, it makes it sound negative. I think people are, you know, whether they're moving from Connecticut to Monroe, you know, for the school system, or people are moving in from out of state, I think it's, it's a, it's a good thing. My dad called this something like a happy problem, which kind of gives it a little bit of a positive spin. But I think to Christine's point, talking about, you know, a little bit in the out years, you know, three to five years, I mean, these people are prob, hopefully these people stay. And, you know, these are gonna be numbers that we're probably gonna see going up through, not just into fifth grade, but it's at Jackie Hollow. And so, um, something that we have to not only keep in, in mind for the short term, but also for the long term. So that's all. Thank you.
David, did you have something?
Yeah, I, um, I just did some very rough math, um, cause it was a method of my madness there asking for, for those numbers. So I took, um, the starting salaries of seventy-four thousand, times two teachers, times five years. This is not compounded. We're looking at seven hundred and forty thousand dollars in five years, not compounded. So, um, I think number one, fiscally, number two, to help reduce class size and better learning, we need to definitely look at some volunteer moving and some redistrict, redistricting of all new people moving in, definitely. That's just, you know, compounded, that's gotta be close to a million dollars, if not a million dollars over five years.
Do we need a committee to study this?
Could do that.
Like an enrollment committee?
Yeah, and we can do a subcommittee of this board.
Alright, any other questions on this? I think the big thing is to start looking at some of those fringe areas that were mentioned tonight and see who, who's there and what grades and stuff are.
Joe, my street is Stepney.
Yeah.
So that's.
Oh, yeah, that's right. I forgot about Purdy Hill. Half is Stepney, half is Monroe L.
Yeah.
Elstree has all three schools, I think. Doesn't Elstree, I mean, I know it's on the road, but I think it got all three on.
It has all three.
Right.
Yeah.
But yeah, but I was saying, Purdy Hill, the, you know, one side is Monroe L, one side is Stepney, so both buses, it makes no sense. What is that? Blueberry, Blueberry?
Yeah.
Yeah.
All we have to do is say, all new move-ins.
Right, that's what I'm saying.
That these addresses are going.
Or, if you have a kindergartner starting this year and you live on this street, you're now gonna be at Monroe L. Yeah, and let people. I get it if you have kids in schools already, like if you have siblings, you can't, you know, that's all, you can't offer that. But I think anybody new with a kindergartner only in that school, if you're in that area, you can start moving.
Alright, so Joe will report back when he. All right, so Joe will report back what he, what happened, what the results are of looking all that.
I'll shoot something out to see if anyone wants to sit on that, Alan, it's a good idea.
I'll sit on it.
I'll sit on it.
I'm happy to take any help, again, cause I know that.
I'm all good.
When you start talking redistricting, you start talking about the third rail and education stuff.
Yeah.
It's just common sense. If you can't tell from my, uh, my lack of comfort right now.
I know.
Well, I've mentioned, I've mentioned in the past those are words you guys never wanna say here, you're, you're live, that's another place to say, you don't wanna say that here.
No, not with, not with, not with existing people.
Yeah, it makes more sense what Christine was saying with the incoming kindergarteners.
But I understand what Joe's saying, it's an uncomfortable phrase, is all I'm saying, it just creates angst, anxiety.
Right, so we gotta change it, not make it anxiety-driven.
Yeah, there's no logic in your street going to Stepney.
I, I agree, I, I got it, just be careful with the words, that's all.
And it's, I mean, I, I, I think it's a, it's a very good plan, but then you're also probably gonna get pushed back from people saying, oh, well, you know, I bought a house in this district and I want my children to.
No, per board event, per board event, because of redistricting, you can't, yeah.
That's what I should say, right?
Yeah, I will nev, I never want to put anything.
You'll get sued for that, though.
Yeah, because of redistricting is, and also not only redistricting, but what do you mean, I can't go to a private school or a magnet school?
Oh, so you just say per board event. There you go. Is that how you guys always?
Yeah.
Oh.
You can, you, you can put the school, but you run the risk of.
Ah.
I wouldn't do it as a realtor, I would do it.
So you always will say per board event?
Yeah.
Do you guys say per me? No.
I'll probably on the last one, I was gonna make that change.
Yeah, never mention.
All right, we, I guess we will move on to budget update.
You got it, and there's not a lot besides, well, there is a lot, we, I'm very happy that, um, you know, our, our budget, our friend of the past, and we can move forward and put a much better place than we were a year ago when, um, you know, there was so much, um, so much uncertainty, at least the, the nice thing right now is that we have some certainty. We have, you know, we adopted a budget in January, this, um, this board adopted a budget in, uh, January, that, that budget was adjusted along the way. Um, again, I, I wanna thank everybody, um, you know, especially this board, all the administrators that I worked with, um, you know, it was a collaborative process throughout with the First Selectmen, with the Board of Finance, there was some really good conversation, and I think there were some, um, you know, thoughtful adjustments made, and, um, you know, I am very appreciative of, of how the process, um, you know, played out. Um, we are, we're at a spot right now where, um, I, I think it would be good for us, I don't know, I don't know that we've necessarily done this in the past, but I'm hoping within the month by our June fourteenth meeting, um, for this board to be able to adopt a final budget that has the out, the allocations that we'll need to make. Um, there weren't a lot of allocations, you know, um, we know that the First Selectmen and the Board of Finance, they can make, you know, recommendations for cuts, but they can't necessarily cut, uh, individual line items. A lot of those conversations for the adjustments, um, you know, were collaborative conversations about the Fairchild Wheeler's legal settlement and the, um, insurance changes as they, as they came about, so, um, I think it would make sense that at the, probably the, at least by the June fourteenth meeting, that we adopt a budget with the final allocations. And that'll be nice, and we'll have.
Great job, everybody forgetting the word out and one and done.
Mm-hmm.
Great, great, a lot of work went into that, but all of it, so thank you.
Yeah.
All right, any questions on that? All right, we will move on to new business, and we have curriculum first review of the STEM. Art course revision, Julia, you coming up?
Julia and Megan Anderson.
Is that a presentation?
Yep, it's a presentation and it looks like a computer file.
So I don't know if this can open a link, does this have like a right-click on it?
Oh, yeah, is it, um.
And then to open a link.
You said drop your pen.
Hi, everyone, my name's Julia Straw, I'm one of Mike's two assistants at Jackie Hollow, and I'm dedicated to the STEM campus.
I'm Megan Anderson, I'm the art teacher at Monroe Elementary and at STEM for sixth and eighth grade.
So Megan starts her day with us at STEM and then goes over to Monroe L, and she's the art teacher over there. So we have the great opportunity to talk to you about this opportunity that presented itself this year. Uh, I think, you know, we've reflected on a lot of lemons that COVID has given us throughout the past year and a half, and, and Monroe's made lemonade in a lot of different ways. This is a great opportunity to take some different things that came together and, um, and make a revision and implementation to a course, um, without spending money, so we would like to talk to you about it. We had a really good talk at Curriculum Council that went on for about a half an hour, thank you to the Curriculum Council for all of that. We'll do the whistle-stop version for you all tonight. Uh, the vertical team on this, um, course revision was Megan, who does most of K twelve herself, she teaches six through eight, okay, uh, sorry, six through eight with us, and then K five over at Monroe L, John D'Azzi at Main Campus, Dana Maranick at Massey teaches grade seven for STEM, so that Dana can leave and get to Monroe L, and then myself. We're looking to revise the current computer class at STEM and the current art class at STEM and create an applied technology opportunity within the humanities to be kind of the partner class to what we're already doing in engineering with the, uh, STEM cornerstone technology education class. So, uh, the computer class at STEM is part of a six-day rotation, kids take computers in grade six and grade seven, they don't have in grade eight. Uh, once every six days, STEM has a six-day rotation, and they have one day of art. And the computer class, um, Jack, you helped us a lot with the history here, but the computer class was, was, um, included at STEM in the inception, right, going all the way back to, to two thousand and ten, when students at STEM were carrying individual devices, they had laptops, when that was not a, you know, commonality across the whole district. So when I, as a psych teacher here at Massey, was taking my kids to the computer lab for scheduled computer days, kids at STEM had devices, so they had a class teaching them how to use the computer for their daily, um, for their daily work. And what happened this fall was, and that computer classes evolved over time as the field evolves, but this fall, those sixth graders walked in and there are lessons about, um, how to use the Google Classroom and stuff, they'd just been, because of COVID, in fifth grade, they'd just been remote learners, so we, we knew that the implications to that computer class were that it was gonna need some revision because of what our kids had, uh, had lived through, and as we started working through that, we realized that in other areas of technology instruction, we've already moved from standalone instruction to applying technology and infusing it with how we teach. So that engineering class takes their pure learning from science and from math and uses technology to apply it to real-world problems. The sixth graders in the, in the engineering class are doing the Shark Tank inventions thing right now, they think of a problem, they solve it, they present it, there's competition, there's a timeline, and we're seeking to, to take that computer time that we have right now, that once every six days, and create a humanities partner to that engineering experience that kids are having on the other side. So to take their pure learning from art, from ELA, from social studies, and to apply it to real-world problems through design. And Jerry's nodding, because really, the, the number of STEM careers in the arts is, um, is really tremendous. And, um, that's where Megan, you know, jumped into the conversation, um, going off of her, you know, you wanna talk a little bit about your professional career and your?
Sure, so my life before I became a teacher, I was, um, an art director for, um, a graphic design company in Stanford, it was Vox. And so, um, I lived the whole corporate world of art, and, um, and then I had kids and became a teacher, and um, so we've been talking about kind of merging those two worlds a little bit. And our sixth and seventh grade art curriculum right now has a beautiful balance of, um, fine art, you know, painting, drawing, some three D sculptures, um, and we were just talking about trying to add in some more design components to our existing curriculum. So not taking away anything that we're currently doing, but actually just adding stuff to it, so, let me talk about a couple of examples.
Um, yeah, and just the, the vocational component with, um, you know, the exposing kids to all the job opportunities in the arts.
So we were discussing how, um, you know, if anybody's seen like a Pixar movie, at the end of the movie, when the credits roll, there's, you know, hundreds of art jobs, you know, um, that went into creating those movies, and there's, um, so many art jobs that kids really aren't aware of, you know, they're walking around in this whole world of being on devices all day long, and they don't realize that there was tons of designers that created all of these things that they love. Um, so just kind of connecting the dots for them, and, um.
And I could talk a little bit about, uh, how the high school course requests kind of played back to our thinking. When you look at ninth grade elective requests for eighth graders coming out of STEM, so this year's eighth graders, they're selecting fifty-two, um, art and design classes, but out of those classes, forty-four of them are like pure studio art, like drawing, painting, three D, only six kids are requesting the design classes where art is applied through technology, multimedia, architecture, um, and, you know, we have a wide variety of course offerings at Massey in design, but I think our kids are getting to them a little later in their high school careers, and if we push this kind of work into middle school, they'll be aware of the wide application and that there's not a binary, uh, choice between art and technology that really working artists nowadays are incorporating.
Right.
Yeah. Um, so, uh, there was a lot of different rationales, rationale points around this, it was really not, not coming from one intention. The one thing about the teaching of the computer class, it's been done by teachers of different disciplines, and, and right now, this year, it's coming out of language arts time, so uh, by, by working the schedule creatively and having, um, the art teachers teach this computer application, um, it, it allows us to, to make use of language arts F T Es for, uh, you know, some lower class sizes or additional, additional sections, um, you know, for that small amount, which, you know, we're in every little bit helps mode, as, you know, I heard the conversation earlier tonight, wherever we can get teachers with kids in smaller groups, it's worth it. Um, so, all of those things sort of came together for, um, for this course.
That's really cool.
Yeah, me. We center on the mission-driven stuff and the challenging relevance, just the idea that applying, um, their learning to real-world problems is, is more engaging to kids than, um, you know, than learning without application. Looking around at other districts, it's, it's almost universal that a comprehensive middle school has an art class as part of the Unified Arts Curriculum Rotation. Among STEM magnet schools, which tend to be inter-district, where ours is intra-district, meaning just open to our town, the inter-district, um, magnet schools have a wide variety of arts programming, but some of the ones that are the more, um, well-renowned, um, STEM schools, especially Two Rivers in Eastern Connecticut, um, they've, they've added description of digital craftsmanship, digital media as an art form, and they are doing this work. But in terms of, you know, adding design as the humanities partner to engineering within the STEM, um, curriculum, it, it would be progressive of us to be doing that, we would be, we would be, uh, leading in that choice. So this is where, um, we have the existing art curriculum for each of the two grade levels, and then, um, just Megan had done some beginning work on how that, that work would alternate, we wouldn't be losing any of the studio time, we still want the hands-on experience in art, but because we're adding the computer time, there would be additional digital technology, um, lessons. So do you wanna talk a little bit about how one unit would lead to the other? And Joe, can you open up the modern self-portrait? That tab left, yeah.
So one of the current projects that the sixth graders worked on in the beginning of the year is this modern, um, self-portrait. They start by taking a photograph of themselves, and then they take a, um, piece of acetate and lay it over the photograph and create like a contour drawing, oh, I brought another one so you guys could kind of see, um, a contour drawing of themselves, they put that aside, they create a background, which you can kind of see here if you're thinking of this in layers, they create a background that's either collage or painted, and then they end up laying that acetate over that background, so it becomes this multimedia project. Um, they usually like the outcome of it, they like that they didn't have to try to, you know, draw it step by step, cause, you know, middle school kids, they, you know, are very cautious about like what they look like, so this is a very easy way to get them to do a portrait, and they, um, tend to love the outcome of it, um, but when we were talking about the technology component of this, you could. You could, um, take the same beginning steps to this project and then also add in, uh, a program called Google Draw that they can, um, use on their Chromebooks.
This one?
Yes, please.
Um, this was just on social media, I pulled up recently, and this was an art teacher playing around with Google Draw, creating a self-portrait. Um, so a lot, it's along the same lines, but it's adding in our digital component of how they could create a portrait.
And I like how this unit has them thinking in layers, because that reminds me of AutoCAD, which is architecture, it reminds me of Photoshop, which is graphic design. So these are the building blocks of all those STEM careers in the arts and, and technology applications of studio art. That, that CAD helped my son so much, he's top. Yeah, in the engineering class, engineer, he graduates UConn tomorrow as an engineer, and, um, yeah, and that CAD really helped him when he, when he went to school, from, from Massey, having that background here at Massey.
Um, the seventh grade, uh, project that we were gonna talk about is a block printing, um, so the students start off with, um, like a soft block, and then they create a design and they carve it out of the block, and then it becomes a printing unit. Um, but instead of just printing it out, out on paper, um, I think there's one more slide that is back in that first page, right? Um, they then would take their design.
This one here?
Yes, that one, um, they would take their design and then they could print it on, I think there's several pictures to that. Um, they could, they would print them on T-shirts. But you can also create a unit with this one where, you know, they, they would come up with a company logo and start to talk to the kids about, you know, well, how does that work? You know, so in the real world, what would happen is, um, a company would come in, they would sit down with you, you would have to talk about, you know, who their competitors are, what kind of field they want, you know, like start to open the kids' minds to like the whole design process. Um, and then they could create logos, they could print them out on T-shirts, and, you know, they, you can talk about all like the product designs, and what happens when a company creates a logo, how many different things does that logo get printed on, and they have to think about the whole process of it. Again, that's just another connection to real world where it ends up.
So this would allow us to make our, um, our art and computer time for students truly interdisciplinary, and it follows along with the Monroe vision of the graduate, you know, increasing problem-solving skills and application to real-world scenarios as they get older. Um, and it would be a great addition to the Unified Arts Rotation. Thank you, does anybody have questions?
What are some of the software titles that you're using?
We're still gonna be working on that, um, the one that I was just showing you was Google Draw, we've talked about, um, Tinkercad recently.
We're already using Tinkercad, yep, we just got approved for Pixlr, which passed the Connecticut Student Privacy, uh, requirements, and Canva is, um, a useful one for graphic design, especially the, like posters, T-shirts and stuff, but
Mm-hmm.
It is not yet cleared through student privacy, but it works. But we're not looking for Photoshop licenses or Illustrator or anything like that, what, what, what's free for the Chromebooks is pretty amazing for sixth grade and seventh grade right now.
Great.
Great, anybody else? All right, then next time this will be, um, on our agenda for a second view, uh, review and vote anticipated.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, thank you.
That's great.
Um, we will move on to item ten, which is gonna be executive session, um, superintending contract discussion. We will dismiss from there and no action will be taken, so we will not come back here. Uh, do I have a motion to move into executive session? Thank you, Jerry, second, Nick, any discussion? All in favor? Let the motion pass, Steve. Good night, everybody, for those.